District one Violet.
Here.
District two Strouda.
Here.
District three Gading.
Here.
District four Walliser.
Here.
District five Kilmer.
Here.
District six Padretti.
Here.
District seven Slack. District eight Egan. District nine Olson. District ten Easterday. District eleven Jacobson. District twelve Henry. District thirteen Taylor. District fourteen Lawler. District fifteen Schweiger. District sixteen Wilson. District seventeen Muller. District eighteen Sullivan. District nineteen Stanek. All members are present, you have a quorum. Okay, approval of the minutes of the May twenty through twenty-four meeting. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Motion to... Motion by Dave. Second by Wade. All in favor, I. I, opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Audience and visitors, are anybody present or online that would wish to make a comment? Are there any announcements? Okay, we'll have a presentation by Brian Kent from S E H Engineering regarding the expanded investigation related to the feasibility study for the county's landfill. Yep. Welcome, Brian.
Is this on?
Yep.
Good morning, everybody. I see a lot of new faces, so my name is Brian Kent, we're the engineer for the feasibility study of the expansion for the landfill. I also have online, I believe, Melanie Niday, our hydrogeologist. Last time we were here, she was here in person, but she's attending online, so I can... If there's any real technical questions as it relates to the geology, I'll probably have to default to her. But just in general, you want me to start from the beginning process? The expansion process for the landfill is an in-depth, detailed process that really is intended to provide the information to the Department of Natural Resources that the site is suitable for and if there's a need. So that includes, you know, a ton of investigation for the geology, there's a fair amount of socio-economical information as far as the population and the volume within the footprint or within the waste shed. It talks about potentially environmental ecological impacts. And, you know, the needs analysis determines the volume, because when the DNR approves an expansion, they'll only approve it for fifteen years. So part of that is explaining to them and providing the information that there's fifteen years' worth of data in your proposed expansion area. So where we're at currently is that we submitted the initial feasibility study report to the DNR later last year, and they came back and asked for some additional information. So what they do is they issue a notice of incompleteness from the feasibility study, which is very normal. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the cases, they want more information than what you collect. It's kind of a process of, you know, being wise with your investment to, you know, be sufficiently to provide them the information they needed. So the last time we spoke here, we talked about our proposal to going back to them with some additional investigation. Their biggest area of question is the ability to monitor the groundwater at the site. There is some complex geology out there on the east-southeast side of the site. There's a perched layer of water that combines with a deeper aquifer, and they wanted more information relative to that investigation. We presented our proposal to them. They came back and said we want a couple additional monitoring wells and some additional investigation. We presented that to Stacy a few weeks ago. So he just came in here to ask me to come in here and give me an update of kind of where things at. So with that, I mean, I would probably prefer to open it up to questions, if you have questions, so I can address that specifically. I don't need to necessarily get too detailed if it's not a question or concern. Is that sufficient?
Anybody got any questions for Brian? Allison?
So, I have a couple of questions. One, with the DNR coming back with, are they asking for more than what's typical? Than in your experience, are they asking for further stuff that's more, that is beyond the typical? And then how much does it cost to do this additional testing or putting more wells? And was that it? That's the one thing, or are there more? I don't know what I'm echoing, sorry. Or is there more? Is it just this one thing they want? 評估了，或者有更多... I mean, I feel like, yes, being brief is important, but being fully aware of what's going on is also important for us to know.
Right, yep. I would say, to get back to your first question, is this more than what is usual? Yeah, because of the complex geology and, you know, there's just... Us as the certifying firm for both the geology and the engineering, we're comfortable if we understand what's going on, but it's a matter of confirmation. You know, in any situation when you're doing an investigation, there's some level of interpretation, because you can't put a well every five feet. And there's really not a specification other than a minimum of where those wells are located or how close they are to each other. So, you know, from our opinion, yes, we thought that we had enough information to present it to them, but the DNR wanted more. To make sure that, to confirm essentially our interpretations of it. The additional drilling right now, and here's another thing too, is initially we used a technology called hollow stem and also we did tricone coring. They're requesting Sonic, which is the ability to kind of vibrate that cone down to get a core. They used that, it was conducted back in two thousand and five, and it really kind of provided minimal returns, so we didn't propose it, plus it's expensive. So that's what they're asking for, or suggesting right now, is that we use Sonic to put the additional investigation and the additional wells in. We haven't reached out specifically to them for the cost based on the scope that we've discussed with the DNR, but our experience in past sites has been that additional investigation is going to be right around a hundred thousand dollars. And then you'll have, of course, our time associated with observing and documenting and doing some geophysics, doing some testing, those types of things. So I think we presented to you, we estimated it between a hundred and seventy-five and a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But that is preliminary, because, you know, we just, we have to get that final number from the drilling company to do it. And Sonic is, I'm only aware of three companies within the state or nearby that would provide it. So we're kind of at the mercy of their schedule as well. Well, I mean, that's what we... Assuming the data comes back as we project, yeah, that should be sufficient for them to make the determination of completeness and then issue their opinion. You know, when we're out there, we might find something that says, let's put another, you know, it makes sense to put another well in, or maybe, you know, if we can get out there and we can find, because there's a couple dry wells, if we find that there is water in them now, because we've had a lot of rain, that perhaps that those have water, that maybe some of it can be avoided. So, I mean, I'd like to say that would be the last...
I guess what I mean is, that's all at this point that they've asked for clarification on, is to test these wells. There's not more to their request from us?
Um, there is additional information that we'll need to provide in the response to incompleteness, but that information's available. It's not something we would have to collect additionally. And that was, and they wanted some clarification on our volume estimates and some just other minor stuff with respect to the report.
John?
So when you're talking about, you said that the DNR will approve it for fifteen years for the use, right? So if our volume's not our volume that we think it's going to be, and we give that information to the DNR, does that mean that they're going to say, no, you can't make it this big? It's going to be smaller if we go ahead with this? Because right now it sounds like our volumes maybe won't be as big as we thought they were? So are they going to approve the same size that we're trying to get done right now, or is... How does that work?
Yeah, well, the discussion that we had last time, this wasn't part of our response yet, because we haven't responded to incompleteness, was the volume, and I'm trying to remember it off the top, and I want to say it was around four hundred and fifteen thousand yards. There's methodology that they require in code to be able to predict the volume. Part of it's demographics, how much the population is within the waste shed. You can also look at historical volumes and tonnages that are brought in. And what we did is we looked at the historical tonnage and averaged them with an assumed growth rate. And they came back and said our growth rate was like one point six or something like that, or one point eight. And they said, well, we think it should be point six or point eight. So their initial comment was based off of, we probably end up losing about fifteen thousand yards, so I think we'd be right around four hundred thousand cubic yards available. It's based off of, I mean, I think Stacy may touch on this, as far as the volumes that we're currently seeing as opposed to historically. But, you know, it's, one of the considerations is that when you do your volume estimates, you're doing it based off of your commercial account or your residential accounts. There's a lot of commercial accounts, there's a lot of C and D material that also kind of add to it that you don't necessarily account for. So, you know, in any instance, and I think you've seen that a lot here recently, there's a number of facilities within the region that are saying, we really need, from a C and D perspective, the volume. And so I, from my understanding, is the volume's there, it's just that it's, right now, not necessarily being actively pursued. I don't know if I answered your question, so it... If you want to expand on it, if I give me to dig deeper, I...
Brian, why are they asking for this Sonic instead of, you know, why? It's like an above and beyond normal.
I'm going to have to probably default to Melanie on that side of it. It's a different technique, I know it provides a different amount of data with a core, but Melanie, if you're online and you can provide...
Yes, this is Melanie Niday, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, okay. The other, you know, because, you know, you're sitting on bedrock, and often to drill in bedrock, you need a lubricant, and that lubricant is usually water, drilling mud, something, you know, things like that. And so the most common methods for drilling out there will add water or circulate mud through the drilling process. The one advantage of Sonic is that you do not add water, they may add just very minimal. And what the DNR is looking for is kind of a direct observation when we hit, like, our perched groundwater system there. Well, when you're drilling with mud, you can't see it, okay? Because everything's wet as it's coming out of the bore hole, you know what I mean? But with the Sonic, it's a vibe, it's kind of a vibration type of a process where they advance a casing, and, but they can do it with a lot less water or even no water, so that when we do hit those perched systems, we can actually visually see where we're having water. And I think that's really what they're looking for. You know, first and foremost, the presence of a perched groundwater system is unique. You guys have known it for years, that you've had the issue, but now we're just expanding into a new area, right? The other thing is, your groundwater systems are so deep, and so that's another thing that's kind of unusual. And so the Sonic is going to give us a little better, you know, option to view what we're seeing down below. As Brian indicated, you know, twenty-some years ago, the same questions were coming up, and so a Sonic drill rig was brought out there. We do have a few borings that were done previously, so we know kind of what to expect. I think it will be helpful. Will it really change our interpretation? Not necessarily, I see it as kind of filling in the dots, you know what I mean? You know, it's like doing dot to dot, you know, you can draw a line from one dot to another, but if you have one in between, it gives you a little more refine, you know, refining of that system. And so, any new data is always helpful, you know? But I don't see it doing any significant changing to our interpretation, but it will provide some confirmation to the DNRs, so that they feel more comfortable with it. In addition, we're also, in the original feasibility study, we had laid out a kind of a long-term monitoring plan that requires sealing some wells where we're going to be building, right? And moving those outside of the footprint of the landfill, so we're doing that at the same time. And by doing that, that also gives us that additional information. So it's kind of like piggybacking on things that would have to be done anyway. And that way, it's, then long-term, we shouldn't have to go out and put any additional wells in, which originally we knew we would have to at some point anyway, as the landfill is constructed.
So with that in mind, what happens if we say we don't want to spend the additional hundred and eighty thousand? Will DNR just squelch the plan, or?
I would guess that if we responded the way, with the information that we have, they wouldn't issue completeness. So they wouldn't proceed with an opinion. So they'd say that it would be incomplete to be able to make their determination of whether or not it's feasible.
So what does that mean?
Means the process is done. That you don't have an expansion.
And if you're talking about one hundred and eighty thousand, is that within budget? Or are we talking additional, somehow special funds?
Yeah, I'll let Stacy speak to it.
Okay, so for the numbers part of things, so, hi, new board members. For those of you that aren't familiar with me, my name is Stacy Samper, and I am the director out at the landfill and the recycling facility. As far as paying for this, because that was kind of my first question too, how am I going to pay for it? Reviewing the two thousand and twenty-four budget, I know that there is tonnage concerns. There was all last year during the budgeting process for two thousand and twenty-four. We took the solid waste budget, cut the volume in about half of what we have seen historically, five years annual volume. We cut that in half and formulated the two thousand and twenty-four budget. That budget is based on nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five ton. With that being said, within that budget this year is a hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollar county loan payment. That county loan payment is for the approved three hundred thousand dollar line of credit from the county to my department for the plan of operations. To date, that loan, that line of credit has not been utilized. The department so far has paid roughly forty thousand dollars of engineering costs for the plan of operations. And then, so with that being said, we haven't utilized that three hundred thousand dollar line of credit. Therefore, that hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollar loan payment would not need to be made, because we would not be moving forward with any more plan of operations until this feasibility, this additional investigation is completed. So I could take that hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred budgeted for that loan payment and utilize towards this feasibility study additional investigation. Also, I know that that doesn't equal one hundred and eighty thousand. So also within budget this year is a fifty-five thousand dollar deposit into our long-term care and closure fund, which in March, the Wisconsin, the Wisconsin State Assembly or the state government passed Act one oh seven. Act one oh seven is, part of that is reducing the restrictions and the requirements for municipal long-term care and closure. So what that is essentially doing is, historically, government had to cash fund long-term care and closure. We had to have an escrow, we had to have certain, stipulated certain investments. You couldn't put it in the stock market, it had to be in like US Treasury bonds, very secure investments. While business-owned landfills could just do a wealth test on their company and just say, hey, we're good for it, and it wouldn't need to be cash funded. So with Act one oh seven, that puts municipal landfills and business landfills on that same playing field, where it's no longer required to be cash funded. The county, once the rules are promulgated, that, we're anticipating that to be November first. Once those rules are promulgated for that act, the county could then qualify via a financial net worth test, or it's according to, they're going to utilize the federal guidelines for that, but the county could qualify for not having to cash fund all of the long-term care and closure. So with all of that information, that means that fifty-five thousand dollars that I have budgeted for long-term care and closure, that payment is not necessary in two thousand and twenty-four. I do have an email from Dustin Shali, who is with the Wisconsin DNR. He has worked with me on our long-term care and closure for as long as I've been director, and he has stated that that payment is not necessary. We are also in the process of taking that fund, that long-term care and closure fund from People's State Bank and moving it to the Wisconsin deposit or the Wisconsin investment pool. So that process is going to be a bit of a lengthy one too, because we have some larger investments that are not mature until sometime next year, and we would take a hit on that. So they're working, the DNR is working with People's State Bank to try to minimize, or minimize that loss in that transfer. So I guess what I'm seeing is, right now I have a hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars budgeted for a loan payment that's not necessary, and fifty-five thousand dollars, which I'm going to call it fifty thousand, because I just received approval on last Tuesday to use some of that for the leachate treatment system. So I've got two hundred and seven thousand dollars in my budget this year that we could no longer put towards what it's been budgeted for, move that to pay for this additional feasibility study investigation. So that is how I plan to pay for it.
Stacy, I guess I just have some concerns, being this is an enterprise fund, and you're already showing a loss for this year in your budget with the tonnage down. And if we have to come up with a hundred and eighty thousand, say we go ahead and pay that, what's to say the DNR isn't going to request more? I mean, they say that it's probably going to be fruition, but how do we know that?
So right now, our volume, the volume projections through June, when I gave you guys the report in May at the committee meeting, which I didn't print the volume part off, I think we were at forty-six percent of budgeted volume. So where we're at right now with volume, we're there. Like, we're there, we're right where we anticipated the budget to come out at. Doing some preliminary numbers through the end of June halfway through the year, we are looking at, we're at about forty-one percent for the contracted, the hauler volumes. However, we are receiving, we just received a sand hauling project from Darrell and Power, which was about fifteen thousand dollars of revenue that wasn't budgeted for. We're getting all of the contaminated soil from the old highway project. They hauled thirty-seven loads of contaminated soil out there yesterday. They're projecting seventy-plus. So that is all a huge revenue generator that's not been budgeted for. I didn't anticipate three thousand ton of contaminated material when I did budgeting last year. So if we keep on this pace, we will make budget, and some of the other people calculating my numbers have said we will go over ten thousand ton this year. So the volume concerns, I guess I don't, I think we will get there. But right now, we're through June. Volumes for the landfill start increasing June, July, August, September, and then they slide towards the fall, and they're low at the beginning of the year. So we'll recover this, like I said, we're just at forty-six percent, which is only four percent behind where we should be, and that is the slow half of the year. So I think as far as volume, we will get there, and then we've got the additional volumes of these contaminated soil projects coming in, which is not only a revenue generator, but a cost savings, because now I don't have to truck sand up on the landfill to cover. So it's a, it's a win-win.
I'm probably not the only one in the room that's thinking about, how many test wells do we need? And I guess if the long-term goal for the county is to protect our aquifer, it would seem that every hole that we drill exposes our aquifer that much more. So I guess I'd like to understand better the methodology for, to keep drilling monitoring wells and exposing our aquifer more than it is already.
Melanie?
Hey, I had that same conversation with the DNR. And I'll be honest, that was one of the things, they wanted us to drill more actually in our proposed footprint for the expansion. And that's what I said too, I mean, you already have these natural barriers down there. It's like, we don't want to compromise those. And that's one of the reasons why, when they were asking for this additional information, that, you know, there, for instance, there's one wellness that will be in the way during construction. So we will have to replace that well, those wells anyway. So with this additional drilling, we're just, we're going to replace them now. So it really isn't additional drilling, it's just, we're doing it now versus doing it in the future when, as the landfill construction expands and they get in the way. And so, so that, I'm with you, we want to minimize as much as possible. And that's why a portion of the drilling that we're proposing, the intent is to do drilling that was planned anyway, to relocate wells that would be in the way as the landfill construction expands. So I agree, and all the drilling that we're proposing that goes down into the aquifers is outside the footprint of the landfill, not inside the footprint. And that is, that's something that, once I pointed that out, the DNR did agree that we didn't want to do that. So we have taken that into consideration and trying to, kind of locate the drilling where it's most beneficial for long-term monitoring of the facility.
Are we going to counter the DNR on what they're telling us we need to do, or are we just going to accept it?
We did counter. And that's, because the last time that we met here, we proposed, we actually, we were trying to avoid the well that Melanie was talking about. So instead of putting it in the footprint, it ended up going to the southeast side of the footprint. And to more specifically address your concerns, the wells are constructed and designed so that from the surface perspective, that anything from the surface won't get into them. There's an annular space seal as they're drilling down, so that water that touches the surface can't get down, circulate through the well itself. So they're sealed off, and, you know, when you abandon a well, that has to be sealed off as well.
I just have a question on that fifty-five thousand on the long-term closure. As an enterprise fund, it's supposed to be self-sufficient, so is it wise to not put that in there? I mean, even if, because then you're deferring your costs to closure, could end up coming back on the county as a whole as an expense that really shouldn't be there?
Well, right now, with, and I might get a little in the weeds here, but I promise there's a reason. So we're projecting, what did I say, nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five ton this year. Historically, we've taken in fifteen thousand. I have been in a meeting with the DNR about our remaining airspace, okay? When I sent my annual report into them, our historical volumes, we would only have roughly a year of capacity remaining. So with that being said, because we are seeing the reduced volume, which we are budgeting and planning for, because we need, we don't have a whole bunch of airspace to take in historical volume, so we're allowing that right now. So that gives us roughly three point zero eight years of remaining airspace at our current estimated tonnage today. So we'll have three years that will then, we will know with the feasibility study plan of operations, the expansion. Once it's expanded, we will not, we would close, what is it, half of the current landfill? The other half would remain open, because that's where we would be building on. And then the long-term care, you wouldn't, you won't need the long-term care until you completely close the entire landfill. So that would then put that out if the expansion is approved and we move forth, that fifteen years. And that would all then, and should be budgeted with the expansion involving the volumes, the tipping fees for the expansion, all of that. the tipping fees for the expansion, all of that should then be, be calculated out. And that's how we would set the tonnages for the future expansion. If that answers your question. Right now we're looking at about three years to make that closure. Um, and then the long-term care, so right now you don't need to have long-term care fully funded because it's sitting in an investment. It'll generate interest. We're only draining the long-term care. Right now it's estimated about $72,000 a year just to, you know, pump the leachate, continue the monitoring, still clean out the lead, uh, the leachate cleanouts, all of the operational things, but we wouldn't need all, if they choose to close or we choose to close, um, we wouldn't need the, you know, my budget of this year's like 780,000 dollars a year. They're only estimating our long-term care costs to be about $72,000 a year. So we wouldn't need that until down the road. And $55,000, I mean, our long-term care and escrow account, once we started adjusting our investments, it made that much in six months.
So, okay, so now that there is, when we made this decision, it was going to be a year and now we have airspace, which I'm thrilled about, more airspace. When is the projected time that this expansion would happen?
A lot of that would depend on when, as soon as we can get on, get the investigation done and get the feasibility approved. The board had approved, you know, the proceeding with the plan of operation concurrent with the feasibility study prior. So the plan would be is once we have, um, uh, an opinion, an opinion forward saying the, the information's complete, um, we would start up the plan of operation. I would estimate if we're going to be tight, though three years to get it approved and constructed. Yeah, it'll, it'll be very tight and because there's lots of other things too that could influence this, you know, as far as the process itself. Once, once there is an opinion on, um, that you can proceed forward, that the, the information's complete, the DNR will offer their opinion as relates to the feasibility. Before that happens, they'll go through a process, a public hearing process. So depending on how that process goes, then, you know, it could take longer. The plan of operation itself, once the feasibility study is approved, the plan of operation goes relatively quickly.
What people are wondering, and I think people just think it's happening now and I'm like, no, it's not. It's a ways off. So I just, it gives me kind of a number.
Yeah, I mean, the, the biggest obstacle is getting, excuse me, the feasibility determination. And when they say, yep, it's feasible, then it moves much more rapid.
Uh, I just had a question. What is this, uh, amount or size of this, uh, closure fund that you're talking about? I'm sorry, I'm not on the committee. So what is that?
So right now the department, um, has fully cash funded the, the long-term care and closure accounts. Um, they're two separate. So there's one for the closure of the landfill, capping it, putting it to sleep. Okay? And then there is a, there is a separate fund combined for the long-term care. So once we put it to sleep, cap it, then we have to still take care of it. Um, and that's projected out 40 years, um, forever. Um, so, um, right now those two accounts have about 3.8 million dollars in them combined.
Okay, I have a few questions. Is it true that typically we, we approved an expansion project in tandem with a feasibility study approval, right? And typically you would have waited until it was all done before it came to us to approve this project? Is that a tip, is that typical? I feel like we're, I feel like we approved something without all the information and we agreed to do it, but is that normal?
The expansion is the feasibility. The expansion process is, is a broad term to cover the entire permitting process. Um, the first phase of that is to do the feasibility study. Um, depending on the timing, I've seen it done both ways. Uh, it's common that the feasibility study is approved before you proceed with the plan of operation.
Okay.
Um, but there's been a number of instances given, because if there's airspace concern with a timing concern, that those work concurrently with the understanding that the approval is going to be obtained and you refine the plan of operation once the feasibility study is approved.
Okay. So going backwards, the DNR did approve it at one time. Obviously we have a landfill and at that time we used Sonic drilling, but we didn't this time, but now we need to. What was, why didn't we just start with that?
The last time that we, when the feasibility occurred, I think it was in 2004, 2005, three period, I, um, it was started out that it was not Sonic. They came back out with a Sonic rig to get specific information. And from our opinion, Sonic number one is, is more expensive.
Yeah.
Um, and it really, from our interpretation of it, really wasn't that, um, successful with, with characterizing the bedrock. It creates a lot of disturbance when you do it. So it's part of our alternative geotechnical report. And Melanie, if you need to, to add into this, please do so. We, we proposed to the DNR that we don't do Sonic because there was minimal advantage. Um, and they came back and said, oh, we know, you know, we want to see Sonic.
Okay.
Uh, uh, just to clarify that a little bit, there is that, um, the other drilling methods, we also did geotechnical drilling that to help with the design of the actual, uh, expansion area, which Sonic does not provide that information. So yeah, it's, it's a little bit of both, but, uh, but yeah, your original dating of your landfill goes back to actually the early nineties. And so it, you know, every time you expand out there, there might be additional questions. And really in this case, I think what the, I would say the driving force of using Sonic is so that we could observe water better as compared to the other drilling methods.
Thank you. Um, Stacy, I appreciate you, like we asked department managers, how are you going to get creative? How are you going to pay for it? And I, I understood your, I understood all the things you were saying and it made sense to me. You will need that $300,000 back though, just not this budget year, like, no.
Musical stage here. Um, yes, so we won't, I, we would not be continuing with any, any additional plan of operation movement until after this year. Because until we do this investigation and start supplying that feasible, that additional feasibility study information. So that is still a line of credit just out in limbo, untouched.
And until we know it's all done and checked and we can move forward, that's when you would come back for that additional.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but not this budget year.
Yeah. And if memory serves me correctly, or when we had the conversation about this plan of operation, it come up as well, is it a loan? Is it, we, should we do a line of credit? And I was like, well, I've taken, requested, um, money for the feasibility study that we ended up not using. I have requested a loan for a truck that we ended up not using, like it just, you know, so we got it, but then we ended up paying for it via tipping fees and stuff. So that's why they went with the line of credit, I believe is how it was done.
That makes sense. And then my last thing is I don't know what I don't know. And I'm not on the committee. So I am going to ask committee members, is there something more that we should know about? Cause Brian, your report was brief and I appreciate that, but I don't know what I don't know. So do we have all the information? Cause you all got a much more in-depth report. Is there something more we should know?
That was basically all we were told also is that needed additional wells and it would be about 180 and we were told possibly 200,000. But I guess the question I have Stacy is, um, it was discussed, we had a brief video from a person, I can't remember his name, the foam overlayman. Could you talk about that, that that would extend the life of the landfill we have now?
Yes. So aside from all the other activities we have going on out at the landfill, we're also in the process of investigating an alternative daily cover system. Uh, what that is, is like I said, um, I mentioned it, getting in this additional daily, uh, cover material from other sources, I'm not having to truck up sand on the landfill. Um, this is an alternative daily cover system to, um, not have to use as much of that sand. So the DNR requires that you put six inches of daily cover sand on top of the landfill at the end of every day. Um, helps minimize litter, odor vectors. Um, so the system we're looking at, um, is being utilized by several county municipally-owned landfills across the state of Wisconsin. I personally visited Outagami County, Adams County is using it, um, Dane County. Um, it is a spray. It's a foam, um, I don't want to say it's a foam, but it's like a clay betonite, um, mixture. And so that would require a machine, um, like a hydro seeder. It mixes this stuff up with water. We would apply it to the landfill. Um, we, early in the process, I'm looking at equipment, um, some equipment costs, um, as well as we have to do a plan modification to be able to implement that in our current operations. Um, but the theory of that is instead of doing the six inches of daily cover, it's a spray on. And I've seen it applied at Outagami County. It's wonderful. It sprays down and everything stays. So I'm really excited because picking litter is not my favorite hobby at the landfill. But, um, so we're looking at that, which would also, if we're not putting six inches of sand, um, it's stated that you can recover about 80% of that. Uh, it's not a perfect world, so that 80% is pretty mythical, if you ask me or my staff. Um, so instead of recovering that six, or placing that six inches of, you know, virgin sand or material in the landfill, it shrinks it down to a, a, a smaller layer. So in theory that would save and help conserve airspace as well. And it would also help address some of the town host committee concerns as well. So we're investigating that too, but, um, and I think that should be brought in July to the infrastructure committee.
Any other question, Mary?
Just a statement, I did attend that meeting virtually and I like that Stacy is looking ahead for better options. And it would address greatly that our neighbors and make us better neighbors because then they wouldn't have all those go mackerel, um, things going in their yard or whatever else, but I, apparently that's the big one. Um, and I appreciate you looking forward, sinking in technology because technology is our friend at this time to help. So thank you.
Uh, Brian, you mentioned, you know, there's some uncertainty on the timeline. There are some things that, you know, aren't necessarily in your control. You brought up specifically public hearing process. You've been around and heard some of the public comments. Uh, you understand that this is, you know, potentially a contentious issue in our community. The possibility of those hearings, you know, I, I would imagine dragging longer than is typical is, is probably there. And even without that potential delay, we're looking at a tight timeline. So could you just, and I, I understand you can't get into all of the hypotheticals, but could you speak to what if that three years is, is not enough?
Yeah, the what if, I mean, that was part of the discussion we had with the DNR because when they looked at their estimated tonnage as opposed to what the airspace was, they were concerned that there wasn't enough time. So, um, you know, there was discussion about diversion opportunities, you know, minimizing the amount of material that's coming in when possible, um, and control what's necessary to continue to provide the service to the county, but you know, kind of short-term look at ways of preventing it. Um, there's other options to, to, to consider or to investigate if, if in fact it comes to the point that, um, we're running out of airspace before something gets obstructed. Um, one would be getting an approval from the department to overfill, um, with the idea that that would be graded. Um, another one would be speaking with other facilities, potentially French Island or what have you, to be able to take in a certain amount of volume short-term. So it is a concern of mine. I'll be, I'll be honest, is that it's tight. It's a tight window.
Any other question? Hey, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Nice to share new faces.
Thank you, Brian.
Resolutions, resolution 202430, compensation, market study, final report, implementation. I imagine you're going to cover that.
Um, I have Melina online from McGrath. She gave a presentation to the general government committee and, um, she's going to share that with the full board and then, um, I'll speak when necessary, but after.
I just want to point out, I, I handed you a separate packet.
I just want to point out, I handed you a separate packet.
Should you decide that you want to be a little bit more aggressive within the market and to poise yourself maybe a little bit higher than the average, you have that conversation with your administration and HR team. And then what we do is we move the entire model instead of moving specific positions. And so we reset your model to be able to accomplish that in the future. But as you see things now, you're going to be reestablished back to the average. So what we ended up doing was, as I said, we adjusted your ranges up. We, that sounds like a really large percentage. But then what we did was we started moving some of those positions back down into lower pay grades to help align them better to the market. So when all was said and done, after we were done making all of the changes, your pay grades actually changed from between 0.3 to 9.3%, okay, of that original 9.25. So some moved very, very little, and others did actually move the nine and a quarter. And then we moved some of your positions and your positions, the range of movement is actually a 9% decrease up to about 14.7%. But that negative number does not have a negative outcome for your employees. Your employees still fit very nicely within those salary ranges. So we do not have any red circle situations where, you know, someone is going to be sitting over a new maximum. The key for the county going forward now is going to be how you manage your structure. And we've given some, we've given some recommendations in the report, and that will be, it'll be incumbent upon administration and HR to help you navigate this going forward. And they'll have, they'll have recommendations. But we want you to select an economic indicator annually to identify how much those ranges should move. We want those ranges to move because, you know, the world around you is going up. And so if you don't move your ranges, you're going to start falling behind in the market again. And then the intent has always been to keep the employees stepping through that model so that they have that additional opportunity to hit that average market rate, and then go a little bit above and beyond. And continue to do a market update. You were ready for one anyway. I don't think that the next time you do it, you're going to need a substantial change. Keep metrics. Metrics are going to tell you when it's time to do it. We normally say three to five years. Right now, it's, you know, most everyone is trying to do it every two or three because of the market. But if the metrics are telling you that you're holding your own, then it's okay for you to delay a year. And we want you to just follow your number because that really is an objective measurable way of deciding, do we need to go back out to the market or not? And the last thing that we have in there that was also in 2021, but just didn't, didn't come to completion, is policy recommendation on how you utilize the salary schedule. What do you do for new hires? How do you deal with promotions? That information has been provided to human resources. I believe that they're going to be doing a review and coming back then with some policy updates for the county to consider long term. And with that, I would happily answer any questions.
Allison?
Can you touch on, had?
Oh, had we not done? Had we not done the, now I lost my train of thought. Had we not done our 10% a couple, like last year, had we not increased, what would this have looked like today?
Significantly different. You would probably find that we...
And the reason I mention is because at that time, it was very hard for some board members to understand. And from where I'm sitting, like by doing that, we illustrated a proactive way to handle our wages. So that today, it's not, it's a much different conversation, which with a much less, with a palatable price tag.
Yeah, you're absolutely, absolutely right. I think we certainly would have found that you had less blue in those charts because the blue is the positive number. And we likely would have seen more the graphs and charts that we found in 2020, simply because there was so much movement going on in the market. Your issue, you had two different issues. Number one was that you were not keeping up to the market. And then number two, you were moving positions into differing pay grades. So that that extra 10% really did help you keep your positions, you know, a little bit closer to market. So maybe you weren't feeling the pain of turnover quite as much. What we really then needed to fix was maybe some of those salary ranges that still, that wasn't really quite enough. And then we needed to then just reset maybe some of those pay grade changes that you had made over the years. Because I understand what you were trying to do. You were trying to continue to capture the market and using a different pay grade instead of using the existing pay range and pushing people through. But yes, without having made the changes that you did in the last year, financially, this would be a much different conversation.
I was, one of the questions I have here is you based this on the 50% model or average? Does that understand? My question is this, is that, is that a sustainable model over time? Particularly if we, you know, we're kind of a unique situation. Our just, our county kind of busts up against counties that are very poor and counties are extremely wealthy. Is that sustainable? Particularly if we start losing, you know, 50 to 60, maybe 70% of our employees, if they do leave, they go to the richer counties. Is there some other model that we may be anticipating in the future to have to address that reality that we have to, you know, in dealing with retention and keeping up our current staff?
Good question. And I wish I had the crystal ball because certainly there's a couple of things at play. First one is your geographical location and that you are around some very rural, smaller communities that you don't have the wages that you have. And then you are right next to some big, the big players, we call them the big boys. And they, you know, they drive a lot of the market. You're also really close to Minnesota, and you've got that Minnesota effect. But what is unknown at this point is what's going to happen with the economy. We do see that, I don't want to say that it's cooling, but we're starting to see that perhaps organizations are starting to take a little bit of a breath with their recruitment, and people are hanging on a little bit longer. There's less jumping around that's occurring. So when, when we start talking about, do we need to be higher than the average? I like to urge a little bit of caution with that because it's, once we go high, then you have to sustain that on, you know, for a period of time before the rest of the market catches back up to you, where then you would simply be at average. And I think the question really is, is can you financially sustain something above the average? I, you know, I hope that you can financially sustain the average. If you have the means to look at a little bit above average, there are, there would be reason for me to say, I think we can have that conversation, just given some of the big employers that you have in this region. And, you know, you are a little bit more isolated. And so you know, you've got more drive time and whatnot, and you need to be able to, you know, pull in that human capital. And that can be a big challenge sometimes. You know, people may or may not want to drive, and it depends on where they live. So there's just so many variables to that. And normally what I tell people is, let's start at average. And let's see what that does for you. And if you are struggling, then, then we can talk about, do we need to bump those ranges up so that we maybe put you at more of the 55th percentile or the 60th percentile to find that sweet spot? I'm afraid if we were to go so high so fast, you may not be able to financially sustain that. And then you're going to have a really couple, a couple difficult financial years while you wait for the rest of the market to catch up to you.
Mary?
Okay, so the board, if you look at this sheet with the green and the blue, what we had to do, and David, we had started this, and then we had the reorganization, and we really ran into some problems. We lost over half of our employees because we didn't follow through the last time. So within that, we also had COVID. So when you see that blue, those were direct impact that as a board, we had to stop the bleeding. And so there was an increase with the Burnham Manor workers because we were paying a lot of money for nursing pools. And so we had to bring their wages up. And we decided as a board, let's try that. So when you see blue there, they're actually at where they should be. So they aren't going to go backwards, but they are at market price where they weren't before. Is that right, Cassie? And then?
So on that sheet you're referencing, the ones in blue are the ones that are going down a step for those positions. And I'd ask, Melina, can you speak to that for those nursing positions that we were so far above and beyond where the market was?
And I mean, it's going down, but they're not going to lose wages. It's just, if, that's what I want to explain. It's complicated because there were two things that happened here. Then we did a wage increase that finally did go through. We did that. And then we had to do the Burnham Manor thing. So they're not going to lose money, but they're going to just stay there. And I just want to make sure people realize that because that's difficult to see, like, oh, my gosh, they're going down. It's, they're not going to lose money. That was my first question when I looked at this.
You're absolutely correct. No one is going to lose money. What we do is we place them on the step closest to what they were earning without taking a decrease. So for some of your folks, even though they're going to go to a, you know, lower valued pay grade, there's going to be, they're probably, they're going to get a bump because of it. Because in this process, no one is allowed to go backwards. So no one, even though their range may go down, no one is being negatively impacted with their, with their hourly rate.
Any other questions? Okay. Do you must?
Yeah, do you mind?
No, go ahead.
Allison had brought this up, but just a little background, especially for our new board members. Last summer, we were having significant issues with retention and recruitment. We brought those issues to the general government committee to approve moving forward with this market update, which was approved by the board in August. At that point in time, we also approved a 5% overall increase for our employees in September and another in January while we worked on the wage study. We waited just a little bit to get going so that we could see other counties 2024 budgets so that we weren't a year behind from the get go. And then what you have in front of you here is the final adjustment to those market rates. The results were reviewed. Tricia and I met with each department head and went over each and every position. We checked for accuracy and equity, both within their departments and countywide. And then the weeks preceding the general government committee, I held staff meetings with each department to discuss the process, the wage study, and what the implementation will look like. We did build $200,000 contingency into the 2024 budget for implementation. And then, as Melina mentioned, we'll have some recommended policy that will come to general government in July.
A lot, a lot of thought, a lot of time went into this process. I just want to thank them for taking that on on top of everything else. So Nate?
For context with the retention and rollover issues, was that countywide pretty evenly distributed or was a certain department seeing you above that?
I would say it's pretty countywide. When we looked at this during the general government meeting, there was approximately 234 employees that we lost during that period of time. But it was throughout the county.
There wasn't a significant, like what's going on in this department, if that's what you were addressing. There was not a trend that led us to think this is a leadership or a department problem. The volume of people leaving was universal across and so it really was a compensation problem, I think is what you were getting at.
I would like to also address that. So some of these positions need a lot of training. And with that, they took their training and their bandwidth with them. So that's a soft number that you don't see. That's a huge thing and impacts departments greatly when there is such a turnover like that. And they took all their experience with them and their training because that's expensive.
And not to belabor it, I think if we can stay at the, at the average, we're going to do better than historically the county has done. And to Mary's point, I've had department heads over the years saying, I'm, I'm kind of tired of being the training ground and bringing all these people up to great skills and then someone else gets to benefit it. So I think if we can commit to holding the average, we're going to be doing better than we've ever done, at least that I've seen. And we'll stay competitive, not just with the wages, but with keeping people in our place.
Thank you for the information. The one question I had just for help me, when you say a 5% increase, I'll just throw that out. Does that, is that strictly salary or benefits included in that? When we say you give them a 5% increase, are you saying their salary increased by 5% or their, their package increased by 5%? Can you just make that clear for us all? So?
Yeah, it would be the salary or their hourly rate. And then with that comes extra contributions to their Wisconsin retirement system based on their pay rate. But there aren't any other benefits that we offer that are tied to their salary or hourly rate, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I didn't know. I'm sure that had to go to their health insurance. It's 12% or something of that nature. It had to be siphoned off or anything of that nature. That's not occurring. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 2024-30, the compensation market study final report implementation, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. Resolution 2024-31, MOU between Vernon County and WPPA, shift differential, motion to bring it to the floor? Allison, second Martha? You're going to speak then? Okay.
So at the end of last year, we approved a new union contract. There was something we had discussed but never actually made its way into the contract. So our previous language had stated that when an employee's hours start before or extend past the ordinary times of their shift, it's considered an extension of their original shift and those hours are paid at their original shift rate and they don't get the night differential premium. But when we were having our discussions, it was understood that any hours that were worked between 5:00 PM and 5:00 AM would receive that night shift differential. So we wanted to clarify that. And the union had brought this MOU to us. This went to general government committee and now it's before you here.
Are there any questions?
Do we have to, the number is wrong. Do we have to, you think? It should be 31.
Yes. What is it?
It says 30. It should be 31.
Oh, it's 31 there. Okay. Can you just renumber that?
I can renumber it. It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda. It's 31. So we can just renumber it. There's 31. Okay. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of Resolution 2024-31, MOU between Vernon County and WPPA for the shift differential, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. Resolution 2024-32, sheriff's office fee schedule, motion to bring it to the floor. Charlie and Dave. What do you got, Roy?
Well, the last meeting, I think we set a record. It was the shortest county board meeting and the sheriff was up here speaking. So yeah, I'll be very brief here. So the sheriff's fees were last visited in 2022 and set for the year 2023. And the only change, there's two minor changes here. Our special duty deputy rate, that would be like if there was a concert in town and they were hiring us for security, that's something a cost to taxpayer does not need to incur. So we bill for that. And we were set at $65 an hour and we'd like to make that a range of 65 to 80. It gives us flexibility because if we're using someone on shift, they're at regular pay. But if we're calling someone in, that would be time and a half. So we just would like that flexibility to increase from, to that range of 65 to 80. And then the only other changes were is we had to remove some of the open records fees to stay in line with statutes. So those are the only two changes. Any questions?
Okay, seeing no questions, all in favor of Resolution 2024-32, the sheriff's office fee schedule, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. Had a request for a break, so we'll take a five minute break.
Nice job, guys. Scott, you're booting right on.
Now that you hear the
All right, first off, I want to thank you on behalf of our staff for approving the wage study resolution. I know it's very much appreciated countywide. So I continue to work with Bethany St. Joe's on a prospective management agreement for Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres. We're currently working to evaluate the benefits packages between our two entities, looking at specific employees, ways to make them whole during a possible transition and looking at ways to make the possible transition as smooth and equitable as possible. We're hoping to have a draft agreement ready for consideration by the next Board of Trustees meeting, which is currently scheduled for July 12. The cash reconciliation for 2023 is complete and the auditors are here this week, so we're still on schedule. For those of you that were around last year when we were wrapping up our audit in January of this year, I'm very proud that our finance team here and our finance people across the county have, you know, all contributed to that effort. So the opioid prevention and abatement steering committee awarded two grants. Each grant was for $25,000. The first was to the Knutson Memorial Library for peer support, training and programming, and the second to Next Steps for Change for peer support within the jail. We'll have another resolution coming to general government in July for another opioid settlement, and that'll come to the full board as well in July. Connor and I have been working with the department heads to clean up the department webpages as part of the ongoing website update, and that's going very well. The recruitment for the finance director position continues to be a struggle. I'm trying to find CPA or accountant to assist with the preliminary stages of the budget process and provide assistance to the finance team department in the interim. As most of you know, I've been doing those duties for the last three months in addition to my own, and we're getting to the point where we could use just a little more help while we continue that finance director recruitment. We'll be rolling out training for the new phone system in the upcoming weeks, so should be a lot of fun, right Connor?
Yes.
Tricia sent out an email yesterday, and then you also have a paper copy at your desk. Believe it or not, next week marks a year that I've been here. So as part of that process, we'll be doing an evaluation, which will be considered by the general government committee. So if you would be so kind as to fill that out and return it to Tricia, we very much appreciate that. Yesterday at the Human Services and Veterans Committee meeting, it was reported that the Veteran Service Office has had a $12 million impact on the county's veterans in 2023. So I thought I would report that to the board as that is significant. And then finally, registration is open for the Wisconsin Counties Association Conference, which is in La Crosse this year. And as a reminder, if you're a new board supervisor, you get to go for free, so I highly encourage our new board members to take advantage of that. Any questions? How did we do that last year, Jerry, for the board members? Did you? Charlie was the only one that went. You did it on your own? Okay.
I don't know where the free part comes in, though.
It is.
I've never seen that on there, I guess, but
Yeah.
It is.
Is it on there?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the, for, for brand new ones, it is, and after that, you gotta pay.
Yeah, I can take care of the registrations and I'll send an email out so we get a little bit closer to. I did that for the thing down in Prairie Dusche, and so I'm happy to do that again.
The county pays for it, so if you pay for it yourself, you can get reimbursed, or Cassie or I can do it. Thank you, Cassie. Ordinances, ordinances 2024-01 broadband forward community ordinance, motion to bring it to the floor. Dave? Oh, excuse me, point of order by will. Are there any petitions? Are there any ordinances?
Yes, there's two.
Yes, there's two of them. Motion by Dave to bring it to the floor, seconded by Martha. Okay, now we're back where we belong. Who's? Connor? Okay.
Good morning. Before you, you have the ordinance proposed for broadband forward. For those of you unaware, there is a very large broadband initiative project going on in the state of Wisconsin and federally as a whole. The federal government allotted infrastructure dollars for broadband expansion and equitable internet for all, and it's disseminated and funneled down to the state. The state then developed a grant known as the BEED grant, and ISPs can then apply for those broadband dollars and expand broadband infrastructure within local counties and territorials. The proposed model ordinance in front of you relates to BEED specifically, but not only to BEED, it handles broadband as a whole. This has really come into fruition over the last six to eight months because of the nature of BEED and the rapid broadband expansion and the permitting, the permitting process and just the influx of inquiries and ISPs that would be expanding in a county. The ordinance essentially is, you know, there's model language in there that is kind of encompassing to a more of a process flow that Vernon County currently doesn't have, but if we were to adopt that in the future, it would speak to that. Realistically, the broadband ordinance or the broadband ordinance would designate a central point of contact for Vernon County, which would be the grants officer. ISPs can then see that Vernon County is a broadband forward county and community. There would be a central point of contact where these ISPs, when the BEED dollars is awarded to contact, and as part of the BEED grant, there will be ISPs reaching out, whether, you know, Vernon County wants that or not. It's part of the BEED application to get a letter of support. In some cases, board approval or board backing as well. And so this really just denotes a formality of who the central point of contact is for Vernon County to streamline that process for the BEED grant specifically, but then moving forward to larger broadband projects as well.
Any questions for Connor? Connor assures us that this does not ground sign any of the township's rights and
Yeah, as a point of clarification, you know, and I don't speak legally very often, but in lieu of Nikki's absence, this does not trump their local ordinances or, you know, legislation on the local level. This points as an ordinance, and then it would filter down to whatever their local legislation is as well.
Any questions? Sandy?
It says the fee will not exceed $100. Who decides what it will be and what will the normal fee be?
Yeah, and there's some language in there that is not applicable. It's, we don't have an application fee today, and so it would just not be applicable. We wouldn't assess that fee. If we wanted to, you know, assess that, to reevaluate those needs in the future, if broadband became, you know, a really prevalent thing for us and we're, you know, approving tons of applications and reviewing a bunch of materials, it might be advantageous for us to assess that labor fee of, you know, $100 or whatever we may or may not want it to be, but right now, it's not applicable.
Any other questions? Thank you, Connor. All in favor of ordinance 2024-01 broadband forward community ordinance signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose same sign. Ordinance passes. Or this 2024-02, Chapter 58, Article 3, foreclosure of and sale of tax liens. Motion to bring it to the floor. Wade? Dan Wilson? And Cassie?
So Nikki has been working on this ordinance along with Karen, our county treasurer. There were some updates to state statutes, which required some clarification. So in your ordinance, 58-52, the yellow highlighted portion is all that is in our ordinance currently. So the rest of this is reflective of the updated statutes, and what it also does is it outlines our internal county process for these in-room properties. So that say, we do have a turnover in the treasurer's office, someone can come in and knows exactly how to handle these properties. It also designates the general government committee for the oversight of acquisition management and the sale of the tax-dated lands. In a nutshell, it's a long ordinance.
Any questions? Sandy?
Could we make a correction that it's ordinance 32, not 2? And that it's also
It is.
Closure?
Pardon?
So what's in my packet, it says ordinance 2024-02.
Which it is, because it's a second ordinance, different than a resolution.
Okay, but then, okay, the title, though, it says broadband.
Is that wrong or right?
Is that correct?
Okay, the original packet does, does have the wrong title, you are correct, but the revised packet is correct.
Okay.
And the one that we're looking at now is, is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks to Cassie, she caught it, but not till this morning. Any other questions?
And what is the correct title, then?
The correct title is just like on the agenda, Chapter 58, Article 3, foreclosure of and sale of tax liens. Seeing none, all those in favor of ordinance 2024-02, Chapter 58, Article 3, foreclosure of and sale of tax liens signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose same sign. Ordinance passes. Are there any memorials or remonstrances? Any reports standing or special committees? Any other?
We got
Oh, no.
Connor.
Connor. We're gonna skip right over you, Connor, you've already been up here, so.
All right. Good morning once again, happy summer. Chris, if you wanna pull up the presentation here. So I come before you, I'd want to provide some insight into what our IT operations do on a high-level bird's eye view, projects that we have in the docket, on the docket in this year and upcoming, and just a little bit more about us. Wanted to share that information with you all. I guess I could grab the clicker here. All right, the IT department. We break our IT department in a few subsections here. The department's role is to manage and maintain the county's technology and hardware, as well as software. We patch, we do updates, ensure that our hardware is current and replace that hardware, and then ensure that our operations are optimized and best fitting to the organization's needs. The second bubble there is the services, and that's really the core of what the department does. We assist staff with technical-related needs, both hardware and software capabilities. We onboard staff, train them, as well as just account processes and workflows on a daily basis, ensuring that, supporting our organization needs. The next category that, that we bolt on is cybersecurity, and that's become oh-so-prevalent over the last 10 or so years here. But cybersecurity, you know, we, we patch and look for vulnerabilities for known threats. We implement modern security protocols. We maintain security awareness with our agencies in the LSACs, MSISEC and MSLSEC. We work with CIS, Center for Information Security, CISA, which is the federal agency, FBI, and then we review our logs on a regular basis as well. And then the last bubble there is technology innovation. So we're always trying to work with our vendors to see what, what technology is on the forefront and coming up, you know, in days to come. Attending conferences, educational content and webinars, staying prevalent with, with the modern day and the technologies that are ever-evolving. And then at the bottom there is, is really our mission statement. Our mission is to provide technology solutions and services to deliver and support innovative, reliable and secure technology solutions that align, align with our current and future organizational needs. So that's really the core of our, our mission. Everything we do within IT kind of hits one of these four boxes. It's kind of like a cost-benefit analysis with some more frills. We ensure that, that, you know, return on investment is there. You know, evaluating the yield on the investments into these new technology devices or solutions, ensuring that it aligns with our mission statements and core values. Do a cost-benefit analysis in the cost criteria. Diligent market research, networking with peers in other counties, what, what they're paying for services, and we have the benefit of working in local government that the peers are very open to sharing information, and the costing is, is generally pretty competitive in the government sector. And then when we are ready to look for a solution or solicit for information, we will post RFPs or RFQs. And then lastly, which is arguably the most important, is evaluate risks. So ensure that the solutions or technologies that we're implementing are compliant, and the risk of implementing this technology is in alignment with, you know, our values and ensuring that governance and our data is protected to the core. Who are we? I thought it would be a nice way to put a face to the name because about 95% of our operations are behind the screen. A lot of internal staff and, and board members don't get to see us on a regular A lot of internal staff and board members don't get to see us on a regular basis, so. So you have myself, Brian Wendorf, our IT, our system administrator, Chris McCarthy is our IT technician, and then Eric is our help desk support specialist. And that's the core of our, our team that makes up the IT department for Vernon County. So what services do we provide? And, you know, the list goes on, and I'm trying to keep it relatively brief and high level for you, but we provide a lot to sustain the county operations. On the slide, we have desktop and laptop support, and that's, you know, the physical hardware component. We're supporting devices, whether it be desktops, laptops, monitors, keyboard, mouse, printers. It's, it's really all the hardware falls into that category. And then enterprise applications is, you know, all of the applications that, that Vernon County personnel and residents use alike, whether that be the website, file shares, the financial systems, our public safety administration suites, any of the, the softwares that we own and operate, we manage that as well. And those two, both the hardware and the applications, we like to bundle in and group those together as what's known as client services. So that's everything client-facing. The rest fall into their own categories. So networking and connectivity, ensuring that we have internet access throughout all of our county buildings, Wi-Fi, and secure VPN connectivity for employees, board members and other authorized users. And that really falls into infrastructure, as well as this next point here, which is cybersecurity and data protection. And as I mentioned before, cybersecurity is oh-so-prevalent in today's modern era of adopting technology and running an organization, but implementing those security measures, managing all of the, the safeguards that we have in place. And then the last one should not be forgotten either. It's IT training, it's security awareness for our staff and personnel, it's onboarding, making sure that they know how to use the technology when they're onboarded with Vernon County. And if any questions arise throughout the, the day, or staff have questions how to use their softwares or other technology that they're given, that's what we're here for. You know, the staff are, are well accustomed to contacting the help desk and we're happy to provide that support to them. I mentioned cybersecurity is, is very prevalent, and it, it really is. It, it's the core of everything we do on a daily basis as well. And we can chunk cybersecurity off into these subsections here as displayed. Cybersecurity is really an onion approach is what the analogy I use on a daily basis. You know, there's multiple layers to an onion, and you have to have all of the layers intact and fully functional to have a secure organization. And so the, the first layer of that onion is network security. And we use all of, all of the, the bells and whistles to maintain a secure network, email filtering, endpoint detection and response, firewalls, web filters, DNS filters, north, south, east and west network traffic monitoring, SIM and ASO, which not to get too down deep in the acronym rabbit hole, but those are a lot of logging and, and reconnaissance of what is occurring on the traffic and on the network. That's second section is user access controls. And so we group, group a lot of items into that category, secure passwords, long and insecure passwords there, timeout periods on applications and sign-in credentials, geofencing where people can access our data, conditional-based access control, security groups and multi-factor authentication. The next section there is data encryption, and so we encrypt data at rest and in transit. And data encryption is, is very important to ensure that our data has valid and, and secure integrity. And then that next section there is kind of getting into the resilience portion of cybersecurity framework, that's backup and disaster recovery. So here at Vernon County, we have adopted a 3-2-1 backup methodology. So it's three copies of our data, two locations, one off-site, one off-site and one offline. And so we really use that to build our resilience. And the other portion of that, that bubble there is having the proper planning in place and exercising those plans. So that's having a disaster recovery plan, an instant incident response plan, and then testing those plans. And we have a tabletop exercise with Vernon Manor and Vernon Acres facility next week to test some of those plans out. And the last portion of cybersecurity is the employees' responsibility and role into protecting our organization, being security awareness, security aware and having that security awareness overall, knowing when they're being fished or compromised, reporting that to us, and then expanding upon that with some of our training platforms such as Know Before, as you all are probably accustomed to. What do we support on the surface? There is a, a good list of, of things that I could rattle off the top of my head that we do support. Our, our scope is ever-mounting, and, and we have quite a lot of, of items under our support umbrella, but that is the gist of what we support, and it is all supported 24/7/365. So I was called to give you an update from the general government committee on just a lot of the major projects that we have on the docket for this year as well, because our, our bandwidth is thin and, and we have a lot in the docket, a lot of irons in the fire at the same time. Some of the major projects that we have for this year, we have our next generation 911 technology and implementation. So for those unaware, there's a federal initiative out there to modernize our 911 operations. And the state of Wisconsin has developed their own grant. Vernon County applied for that grant and was awarded $237,000 to update and modernize their 911 infrastructure. Technology has rapidly increased throughout the years. 911 technology has not. The traditional methodologies and how folks dial 911 and how that call pathing is routed is archaic and needed to be reworked. So that is where the next generation 911 standard comes in. Vernon County is in the process of adopting this, and we hope to transition and go live yet this year. It is moving from analog technologies to digital and is also introducing text to 911. There's a lot of metadata that goes along with the next generation 911 standards, as well as resiliency. We would have the capabilities to transfer our 911 operations to our neighboring county or clear across the state to Brown County, anybody that is on this next generation 911, if the event were to arise that, you know, the sheriff's office had a gas leak or something of that nature. But text to 911 is really a, a big public-facing feature set that is going to come to the next generation 911 standard. And the model that folks are adopting is call when you can, text when you can't. So it's, it's really bringing a robust feature set to our 911 operations where, you know, if there's hearing impairedness or there's a, you know, hostage situation or something like that, that folks could then use text messaging to convey that information. So it's a very large project that we're working on, and we hope to have that implemented soon. Our next project that we have on the docket is our telephony migration and implementation. As Cassie mentioned in her report, we're working heavily on that right now, building out the solution on the backend. We have a meeting yet this afternoon, so I gotta keep our time here brief. And we are going to transform the way that our, our telephony operations currently are, are being utilized here at the county, introducing uniformity within our platforms that we already know and utilize, as well as introducing mobility. The second or the third item there is our government domain transition. So we will be moving from vernicencounty.org to vernicencountewi.gov will be our new domain. It's a multi-faceted project that we're in the midst of doing that right now, not to get too technically in the weeds, but we'll be pre-aliasing and post-aliasing our domain. So folks will be able to email us as they do today, as well as they'll be able to email us on our new government domain yet this year. When we have the official ribbon-cutting ceremony, we'll be moving our primary domain all over to the government VernonCountyWI.gov domain, and then that will be post-aliased. So folks can continue to have that communication and continuity, but we will be dropping that at some point and, and making our .gov domain our primary domain forever. And then the next item on that list is our website redesign and rebranding efforts. We're in the process of meeting with all the departments countywide to take a look at their, their webpages, make sure that there's no stale information, broken links, room for consolidation of content and really streamlining that content to ensure we serve the information out to the public in a, in a meaningful fashion. And we're bolting kind of the rebranding efforts, the website redesign and the .gov domain all into one multi-faceted project to essentially rebrand Vernon County with, with a new updated look and feel. And then the last longstanding item there is our HRAS ERP migration and implementation. We made a lot of headway on that for the, from the technology perspective. We have a lot of the foundational work done with that. There has been some preliminary work on the financial side, but as you all know, we're looking to backfill the, the finance director position currently, so that project is on the back burner, but yet important. Here's a few recently completed projects that we have completed within the last, I would say, 18 to 24 months here. We've assisted and completed a public safety video upgrade and enhancements to our sheriff's department's squad vehicles for dash cams, body cams, license plate readers, et cetera. In, enabled and implemented enhanced email filtering countywide. We implemented a new software solution for the register of deeds office to process their daily operations. We implemented a new software suite in the zoning department to better their operations, implemented a new software suite in the land and water department as well. New public administration suite for the sheriff's office, and we got external agencies involved in that as well. So we're all using a unified platform, and the information sharing has been, has yielded great benefits. If you want more information, I'm sure Roy would love to talk about that. We also moved to Microsoft 365 countywide. That was a big transition, and we yielded a lot of data and security compliance by doing so, as well as we rolled out unified countywide print solution that has gave us a lot of efficiency and uniformity throughout the county. So a few other ones that we left off here, but out of interest of time, we'll, we'll continue on. The IT department is on the bleeding edge of continuous improvement. We have to stay updated. It's not, not a choice. It's the way of running an organization and adopting the latest technologies and making sure that we're compliant. Regulatory bodies update on and change on a regular basis. We are, we have to conform to PCI, HIPAA, CGIS. The state of Wisconsin has a few others, just to name a few, and so I'm always reading through compliance documentation to ensure that we're taking compliance and, and meeting that criteria. Cybersecurity preparedness. We are always preparing our organization and bettering and hardening our cybersecurity awareness and, and practices that we use on a daily basis. And then we just have to evolve to our ever-evolving needs, you know, as our organization restructures, as things evolve, IT does too, and, and our solutions help shape that. And as we modernize a lot of our solutions, the, the digital transformation portion plays a hand in that as well. And then I wanted to introduce and, and surface a little information about AI as requested. So I'm sure you have all heard the term AI. AI means artificial intelligence. It's been surfaced around news outlets and articles. I think there's a, a very good article in the Wisconsin Counties Association that I'd recommend you read in your leisure. Lot of good information out there on AI, but I wanted to give a little high-level picture of, of what AI is and how it affects local government. AI is, is language model-based, so there's tons of different AI out there. You can either have a closed-source AI or an open-source AI model. The difference is, is, you know, the way that that language model learns, if it's going to learn on the general public information or the information curated by users, or if it's a closed-source model that it's not pulling that information in, more organizational-driven, security-minded models are structured in that fashion as well. AI really solves a lot of issues and, and also creates them as well, but it automates data flow. You know, you can talk to these language models and it can respond in a, in a meaningful fashion to you, can build documents, find information that would rather take hours or days on end, generate photos, write emails, solving formulas, and many other workflows. There's tons of different language models out there, and there's tons of companies adopting AI into their solutions and architecture. How local government will adopt AI or use AI is still undefined, but a lot of other municipalities or local government are taking AI today, integrating them into their website for residents to interact with. And as part of our redesign process, we're going to introduce curated search on our website. So there will be a search bar that residents or staff alike can use, and it'll bring them to that information page readily available, rather than scrubbing through a bunch of information. So more of a curated information finding. It's not entirely an AI model, but it's headed in the right direction there. Otherwise, they're using it for an internal staff portal, so, you know, there's, I've talked to other counties and municipalities that are adopting AI internally to have their staff query for any questions. Maybe it's a personnel question, how many hours of PTO do I get? And the AI model could tell you that, rather than parsing through a lengthy employee handbook. employee handbook. And then it creates efficiencies with, you know, driving data sets and creating documents and whatnot. The really founding portion to AI is doing more with less. AI's adoption framework looks something like this. You know, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but it's something that I am heavily reviewing and looking into the adoption strategies there. We're currently collaborating with other counties to ensure that we have the right vision and roadmap for AI adoption and then seeing what they are doing for policy-wise. And we're drafting policies around AI currently to adopt it in the future. You wanna just pull up that quick video? I have a quick two-minute video here and can show you how AI is, how Microsoft is adopting AI into the workforce in their solution called Copilot. That's just a brief insight of what Copilot can do and how Microsoft's adopting it into their ecosystem out there. So there's a lot of tools. Copilot is just one of them. And a lot of the AI models, the challenges that organizations have with adopting those is data governance and how do we adopt that into our current workflows. Currently, AI is a little lagging there with the government sector, but Microsoft's Copilot is going to be one of the leading edges there, and they hope to be GCC ready, which is government-ready by the end of the summer. That is the major projects that we have. A little bit about IT, a little bit touching on AI. If you have any questions, I'll open it up to the floor. Otherwise, our contact information is on the screen as well. Feel free to reach out at any time. No spare time.
Is Copilot launched now?
It is. It's publicly accessible. Yep. It's, Copilot's part, it's integrated into the Microsoft ecosystem already natively. You can, if you use Edge or use Windows 11 and things like that, there's Copilot already built into that. It's the free version of that, so it's going to give you web-curated sources. In organizations, if you subscribe to your, you know, with a tenant with Microsoft licensing, you can pull in the Microsoft organization within, within your resources that you create as well. But this is available in the private sector. People are adopting it right and left.
The General Government Committee, Connor gives an incredible report every month, and I can vouch for him and his department because I've had training over there. This is a stretch, but I've also enjoyed, and this is a compliment, you redefine the word brief.
Thank you, Dave.
That's information on AI. Is AI also can be used in a negative way? And something can look very, very real and say that it's real and it's absolutely AI and not. So with everything, it's a double sword. It does amazing things, but it can also be used in a very negative way. So not everything is what you see or read.
Yeah, I just have a one pager handout as well to, on some important resources that are accessible for everybody. CISA does a really great job. That's our newest federal agency out there that deals with cybersecurity. And there's resources on there about AI. There's resources on how to protect yourself, either as an individual, information for your kids, information for folks around you. There's bingo cards and other information out there too. So CISA does a really great job with their campaign, Secure Our World, and there's information on AI there as well.
Any other questions for Connor? Well, thank you, Connor. Most of that's above my pay grade, but I really enjoy that stuff, so.
Not a problem. Thank you all.
It's good to have other people that know what they're doing. Any other unfinished business?
I had a couple of announcements to make, but you didn't catch my arm was up.
Oh, sorry.
Paul Wilson is a witness. Paul knew it. First, Paul was a witness.
Let me give Paul an opportunity to say yes or no to that.
First of all, to remind everybody that our county board chair and his family are hosting the dairy breakfast Saturday at his farm, his son's farm now.
Still my farm too.
Okay. It's very important to, it's important to support our county dairy initiative as best we can. The second thing was, we were supposed to vote on a resolution today dealing with the decommissioning of our dams, but our legal counsel hadn't had an opportunity to fully vet it. They're working with Monroe County in a similar resolution, I believe, but in the last two weeks, we had a lot of notary people here in this room. Will and I went to NRCS folks from Madison, and there were some dad cap plants in the crowd. And Ben, of course, Wayne and his staff were there, went and took a tour. Mary Henry was with and Nate, took a tour of a dam and some of these mini dams that they're promoting to take the place of the bigger dams. So we've got another month now to think about what we're doing, but the second meeting was in this room was Brad Pfaff, Senator, and Oldenburg Representative. Both of them have been fielding a lot of calls and they were very concerned and I think they had a lot of their questions answered. And we had some feds here and it was quite a crowd, a great group meeting. So having said that, now we're gonna, we've got another month, like I said, and I'm, I'm open to giving tours of the five dams that are in my district, or the six, rather. I've only got one person that's signed up so far, Mary Henry, so I'm paying a dollar if you want to come along. But, you know, do a little research like we've been.
He's paying me.
Do a little research like we've been encouraging people to ask questions, look online, because we did post that abbreviation of the, of that 800-page study. And see you at the dairy breakfast. Thank you.
To kind of piggyback off of that, Landen Conservation Education also moved to have a commission to, and we're in the middle of formulating that with Cassie and Ben, to help our people in these watersheds to have a place to go and get resources or find out information. The watershed groups found that to be a big step in that meeting that we had with all our state representatives and stuff in this room. It was, it was a full room and it really alleviated many concerns. I think it was nice because it was a meeting that people could have conversation, not have an agenda and only be able to speak four minutes. So with that, our conservation and ed meeting last week went very, very smooth. So thank you, Will, for kind of spearheading that to alleviate what could have been a conscious meeting, and it wasn't. And I've attended bad ex watershed meeting. I've been to a lot of meetings lately, especially dealing with the watersheds. So come follow along, like he said, and he's gonna pay me. I asked, I want to look at what these dams look like and why we're going to be voting on this, and I wanted to be on the ground, like I visually have gone to these places. So that's why.
Just to expand on this commission or committee we're organizing, if you have any questions on it, feel free to call me or Ben and Mary or somebody that's on the committee and we'll, you know, try to answer them as best we can. And even if you're interested in being on the committee, we can see how many we can handle. I'm not, we're not, we're just in the, gonna start organizing it and I'm not really just sure how it's, how many is gonna be on there.
Well, mine's a different unfinished business, so if anyone else has a comment on that one. Okay, so Cassie touched on this in her report, but I, Cassie, our administrative coordinator, will hit one year of employment with us next week. So it is, the Board of Supervisors has one direct report, so it is really important that we all look at our inbox, or if email's not your thing, there's paper copies on your desk, that we, you know, this employee deserves fair, comprehensive, and a complete evaluation from us. We all serve on different committees and see Cassie's work in different ways. So for us, the General Government Committee, to give her a fair performance review evaluation, I need you to do your part. So please fill out this evaluation form. You do have a deadline, June 28th, is that right? Then in the July General Government Meeting, we will schedule a special meeting to hold an evaluation for Cassie, but I really want the Board of Supervisors to provide their input on, on their experience, so we can help give Cassie that feedback and also help plan goals for the future. So you have homework. Please do it.
Just real briefly, thank you. All of you are given this sheet from Stoddard. If our department, about everybody in town is kind of going together, developed this for the Stoddard Family Fund Aid, just, it's on July 28th. If you'd be kind enough, each one of you should have a copy of this. If you could just take it to one of your local areas and put her up in one of the bulletin boards at a gas station, whatever, I'd really appreciate it. Thanks for all your support on that. I guess any other unfinished business? I do want to invite everybody out to the farm on Saturday. Rain or shine, we're gonna have it. It sounds like it's gonna be rain, so bring your rainbows. Next regular meeting date would be Thursday, July 18th. We want to move that back one week.
We would like to move it back so we don't compress everything together.
Any objections to moving it back one week?
Is anybody, the 25th instead of the 18th?
You're moving up, not back.
Well, 18th to the.
Move it back, I'm saying.
Move it to the 25th.
The 25th.
That's back.
It is, it is also the Town Association meeting at the KVR, but that's not until 6:00 p.m.
We should be done by that time.
We better be.
Hey, any agenda items for the next meeting? 25th, that's okay with everybody?
The 25th, yes.
I just won't be able to attend. We'll be in Alaska, so.
You gotta make a choice, Mary.
My choice.
Hey, then our finance meeting is gonna be moved to the 23rd. Is that correct? Just so we got this. Okay.
Well, agenda. Are there any departments that want to have a report on this?
Is there any reports from standing committees next month that we should? Is Ben gonna be here for the dams then? Is that?
Oh, he might have that.
We'll have that going on, so.
Yeah.
That's probably gonna be funny, so. Anybody want to adjourn? Walliser in about 30 different seconds there. We'll go with John.
I'll say.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passed.
12 o'clock.
We did her.
We did her. Good job.